No, and that, no, we can't have that. Remember our one meeting got it, Mark got into lots of trouble when he bought the jukebox. We were on till nine thirty, so we don't want that to happen again.
All right, we're back live and on YouTube, it looks like.
Okay, all we need is Eddie back. And we can continue on, or we'll make the decision once Eddie comes back.
Yeah, I don't see Loretta on here either.
Maybe the.
There's Eddie.
Okay, so you've, you've got us live, Eddie. The question is, do you think that we should continue? Or should we close the meeting and reschedule because we had the gap? Um, that occurred, you know, because of whatever, whatever the problem was.
Can't hear you, Eddie. Nope.
Nope. Can't hear you, Eddie. Eddie?
He knows it.
Go over and fix that flooring.
Right.
Technology's so cool, isn't it?
Yeah, works really well.
Hey Eddie, I don't know if you can see it on your screen, but previously you had your own block and presentation. Yeah.
Okay. Alrighty, um, I was, we're, we're back live on the YouTube as well. So we can, I don't know if you want to, we can try and power through this, but I think if we get knocked down again, I mean, it's getting pretty precarious.
Uh, we want to table this meeting for rescheduled for the next month?
I can, um, I think we're back in business right now, so we can kind of truck along. Loretta's watching the YouTube, so if we, if we get knocked down again, she'll let us know.
Okay, well, um.
Do we need to go back over what we discussed during the blackout?
Well, I'm not sure where we were, so we should probably.
Yeah, I mean, if you. I don't, yeah, if you want to just do like a, a quick, I think that would probably be clean. To, uh, I don't think, there were no decisions that were made, obviously, or anything, you know, you want to just reiterate that, but, um. I could conceive, I could go back and. Let's see here.
Well, do we have any idea where we did cut off? I mean, it's not all the way back to the beginning.
No, I don't think it was back to the beginning.
And Eddie can't, could you post the first, I mean, we didn't get any farther than the first two pages, did we?
I think maybe we went, we were going about, we went about ten minutes. Without, may, maybe without video, which we spent a good amount of time on this page here.
Right.
Um, but again, you know.
Well, why don't we just try to muddle through it? It may be a late meeting.
Okay.
Let's continue.
You want me to, you want me to start back from? From the beginning?
No.
Don't think so.
Okay.
Why don't we just start from where we were, and if that got lost in transit, that bit got lost in transit.
Yeah, I mean, I, and I can, I can also really quickly just do a, like what we talked about with cemeteries. Where we ended it was, we're going to come back and research it. We're going to look at property value effects and single-family residential zoning. In those areas, but no decisions being made on that.
Well.
Automotive uses, uh, to be moved to conditional uses in all of these districts and removed entirely from the Amelia Neighborhood Business District. So. And again, no decision has been made yet. We have, you know, there's been no deliberation or motions yet or anything. Uh, this condition was going to, was recommended to be added, uh, due to the ill effects of fumes from vent pipes and so forth. At various gasoline stations. And then, um, these were review waivers to create better flexibility with the zoning commission reviews. Basically, one and two would need to be satisfied for the zoning commission to actually waiver very any particular regulations. Um, same goes with the site plan review, uh, that would ideally be during the, uh, uh, rezoning where the zoning commission would come back and say. Um, you don't have to bring a site plan back to us if it doesn't substantially change from what we have right now. Um, minor, minor additions and park, minor parking modifications and, uh, small accessory buildings would be reviewed by staff. I would clean up the language, uh, instead of having verbal references or written references. To. Um, to, to the district location. It would be, it would be replaced with a map, which I have. In this presentation, so you'll be able to see that as well. And then we, what we probably, it was the Village Comprehensive Plan and Township Plan discussion that we had. I think that was, that was probably the lion's share of what we were dealing with.
Right.
And, um, I was kind of giving an explanation of why, you know, where, where we are with. Long-range planning and why, why I was recommending, you know, township plans be considered. But I think that's where we left off, and I can continue on if you guys are ready to continue.
Yeah, I think everybody understands where I am, so, um, yeah, let's move on to the next section.
Okay. Um, so i- in most of the resident, in most of the downtown overlay, it's Amelia Neighborhood zoning, which allows some. Uh, residential on the, on the second floor and above, so that they can have, so there can be mixed use. Um, thi- this text would just allow, basically in the, in the overlay generally, you'd be able to have. The residential uses on the second floor or above. Um, the institutional housing, it's, it's like a long-term care nursing facility. Those are permitted by right in the Amelia Suburban Business District right now. And. As you know, with that sort of use, those use, a lot of times there's, there are units on the first floor. But the downtown overlay does not allow any residential units on a first floor. So. I was loosening up the language here just a little bit for nursing homes where a nursing home. Through the zoning commission's review. Could approve, um. A, like a nursing, nursing facility to have units on the first floor. If there are buffers, setbacks, and other similar treatments taken into consideration on a, on a case-by-case basis. So.
One of, one of the questions there is, um, resi- institutional housing like that always requires parking. And the area you're talking about, I can't see how you could ever have adequate parking for a facility of that nature. So, um, long-term, we would have to think about whether that becomes, um, an allowable, um, usage.
Well, that's a great point, so. Um. The institutional housing, for instance, um, one of the things, so I put conditional use permit in bold here. That might be a use that we did, that we make a conditional use. For some of these reasons that we're bringing up, where it's very land-intensive, it requires a lot of parking, uh, and it might not be. Um. It might not fit in a particular area just because of the amount of space it could, it could, it could take up or the amount of traffic that it generates.
Right.
Um, but this, this was mostly put in place, uh, I, I kind of brought this institutional housing topic up. Mostly because of, um. The, the premier site that's there now, and we, you know, we don't want to. It's, it's a very, uh. Unique circumstance that they're in right now, and, and I, I don't want to cause any more issues for them. And they're kind of stuck in a very, in a very bizarre circumstance, but, um.
Has there been any new movement on that?
Not that I've heard of, no.
Okay, well, to the, to the point that Dick brought up, that, you know, for example, the buffers, the setbacks, the parking, this and that. Uh, you know, for obvious, for those obvious reasons, you could not put an institutional housing. In the downtown area that used to be known as the Village of Amelia. It would have to be away from the dent center, such as where that premier is, where there is land for the parking and the setbacks. I, I think the conditional use is, is appropriate.
When, when you look at your map, Eddie, um, if, if you look at the, um, the overlay expansion, the pale, the map with the pale blue on it. Um, it goes out and includes the, the premier project. I mean, the second one, which is the proposed, proposed rezoning, doesn't. It's just got the, the yellow streaky lines and the red lines and blue lines, um. You couldn't put an institutional housing anywhere else effectively in the, in that area. Um, you know, so the only one that you could really do it in is where it already is in the premier pro- um. Project, and that was because that was originally the Pomeroy property. And that was the plan that we'd suggested like eight years ago before, um, totally annexed it. Um, and that was one of the things we wanted to put in there. So, I mean, I don't have a problem with there, with it out there, but to try and add that into the pale blue bit, I think would be quite unquote inappropriate. And I don't know how we'd get around that, um, with, with what you're writing here. Because you're not, you're giving a conditional use, the conditional use almost says, yeah, you can do it. Provide you, you're filling these position, these, um, conditions, and I'm thinking, no, you can't do it, period. Because it's inappropriate for that area.
Well, I guess, you know, what it comes down to is if, you know, we, if you want to just take the premier site out of the downtown overlay, that would essentially solve. That could conceivably solve this issue altogether, and we, and we don't have to deal. Um, I was including it in there just, just so that we almost have a clawback, in a sense, so that we can get to review it, and it isn't just, uh. An administrative review for when they do decide to do whatever it is that they decide to do. But.
Eddie, you know.
As, as it's, yes.
Does premier on your overlay map, when you've got the. The horseshoe, if you would, I'll call it the horseshoe building that is started there. If you go straight up from that, that land that is, um, on 125, is that their land as well?
I don't know.
No, okay.
No, I, and, and guys, just one housekeeping thing, I was talking to Loretta, um, ju- just for the record, uh. I'm just going to state that this is part two of the meeting that began at six thirty PM, um. May fourth. So this is part two, part one, there was no, uh, there were no decisions or motions or any actions taken, and that this is just a continuance of the discussion. So just for the record. But, um, yeah, it, the, um, the one thing I did, just to clear up really quick, the, the other thing that I had on this, so we can move along. Signage, signage recommendation I was making was, were pole signs and billboards just to not be permitted in the downtown overlay? Because as it stands now, you can put a billboard and those sorts of signs in, in the overlay. Just, I recommend, you know, based off of the higher degree of review, it's recommended to not, you know. Monument signs are more appropriate, that sort of thing, uh, based on the, the plans.
Should you add the, should you add the word in there, neither poll, neither poll signs nor billboard, billboard shall be, uh, um. Permitted because it's sort of, it, it. It, it, I'm, I'm not, you know, if you put the word neither in front of it, then make sure that everybody understands it's neither of the two things.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Hello?
So, I, I'm, I don't know if that makes sense where I was going with the, um, with the institutional housing, I mean, we, we can, we cannot, if, if we take the, um. I guess we take that the premier site out of the proposed expansion area. It just kind of stays the way it is right now? I don't know if you guys have a thought on that?
I'd be happy to take it out.
I, I would agree.
I already, I, as you can guess, I already think the quote downtown overlay is too large. Because of the concept of, of the whole, the whole downtown, um. Call it the whole downtown thing that, that was from the year two thousand. Um, to me, conceptually, each time I see this getting sort of larger, uh, makes me a little apprehensive.
Okay, so I, I will take that, I'll take that out then.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, um, we, we, we covered it, um, the, the hatched area is the existing location. And the translucent blue area going west towards Cincinnati there, that, that is the expansion area. Proposed, and of course, I will deduct out the, uh, the premier site from that. So, um, the, these sites here are, uh, sites to be rezoned, so right now, the blue. Ha- hatch area, those are presently zoned R2, those are proposed to go to Amelia Neighborhood Business. All of it will go to Amelia Neighborhood Business, of course, but are, the, the yellow is presently zoned R1, and the red is a, a suburban business. So, those would all be turned, recommended to go, go to Amelia Neighborhood, which is more, um, tends to, just a more walkable. Uh, less auto-oriented sort of zoning district for the, to be in the downtown area.
But it still, um. Gives the intention that. That is to be all business.
Yes.
And, um, again, I'll go back and make the point that I made before. Until we have a land use plan that says that is to be the business center of Pierce Township. I'm not sure that it's appropriate to rezone it. To be neighborhood, when you can leave it as, as what it, what it is now. So, you know. Since we, since we haven't made any motions, I, I just wanted to make that notation. That those three areas that you've got on there, the two hatch yellow and the hatch blue, I think would be inappropriate to turn those into, um, possible business area.
What do you think they should be, Stanley?
They're, they're neighborhood areas.
So they should be single-family resident?
Yeah, yeah, something like that, whatever, that, whatever.
Okay.
So that they remain R1.
But if you're a current owner of one of those, you bought it with a business. In mind, why, that, they're going to fight that if we try to change from business to residential, most likely.
Uh, what, what are they now, Eddie? I think they're R1s, aren't they?
Yeah, they're right, they're right, the yellow.
They are residential.
Right now, yes.
You know, to Stanley's point, they are so, I'm going to use the word so far, they're so far off of 125. That. It doesn't really, in my mind, make sense to put a business that far back off of 125. 125 is the obvious place for your business. I can see the red staying that way, but, but not necessarily the, the yellow and the blue.
I agree.
And if those are currently residential, I don't think we should be messing with those, because somebody obviously bought them because they were residential. Unless somebody wants to come forward and wants a business, I don't think we should be doing that.
Yeah, I, I have spoken to, um, the owner of those properties, Mr. Palmer and, um, Mr. Javier Melendez. And so we've had a number of discussions about these properties. And I reiterated what the plan indicates, which is this is part of a, more to be a village center. Type area with commercial. And it is in the plan that, that we adopted. Uh, so. I, I didn't meet any significant resistance, of course, I invited them to the meeting as well, but. Uh, if this commission is not comfortable with that, then we don't have to move forward with it either, so.
Okay, well, Dave had, um, the majority of his property, Dave Pomeray, had the majority of his property, um, changed when he sold it. He's got Glen Mary and the premier project. The yellow bit that's behind, um, the small red piece, that's where his train station and. His train repair shop and those couple of other things are, I'm not sure where the second yellow one that runs off onto, um, Oak Street is.
So, his, so he owns the, the northern, the northern yellow piece that's obviously split up here. And you can see the trains, that is actually split zoned right now. So that's all one parcel where his train stop is into the yellow hatched area. So it's, it's a portion neighborhood business, and then a portion of it is the residential. And then the southern yellow one, that's an, that's Envisum, that's also a split zone property. And it's attached to that, if you go diagonally to the north, kind of going toward 125, it's kind of like a. Misshapen property, but that's also neighborhood business as well. Um, so that it's split zoned with. So it's not really clean, I mean, we would, we would never recommend creating a split-zoned. Property circumstance there, um, and that, that was part of what was going into the, into the reasoning with this. Um. Where. It, it, it just does not make a whole lot of sense, but i- this, this area was also identified in the, in the Red Tiger Study as an area that. As far as, you know, creating a walkable space, you know, walkable neighborhood gathering area. This area at, at Oak and Maple going toward the school and, and, you know, where the post office is and the library, that's. An area ideally where, um. That's, that's ripe for that sort of, that sort of development. Uh, 125 has a lot of challenges that, that need to be corrected in the interim, whereas these areas are obviously undeveloped. Um, and if they develop, we'd want them to develop in a way that allows people to, uh, have a more pedestrian-friendly feel and that sort of thing.
Eddie, on Oak Street, that, that road is so narrow, you can barely get two cars down it, and to think, you know, even think about it. Anytime down the road going into business makes absolutely no sense, because there's nowhere in there, you can even widen that road.
Well, this is why we're trying to plan for the future, you know, it's, it's understanding that there are things, not everything's in place at all times. You know, we want to make sure that the things that we, that we can control at the moment, we, we take care of so that we're not creating. You know, more problems for ourselves as we go down, but, you know, I agree with you, there are challenges to that area for sure. Um, but. To that point. Um. It's not supposed to be. A, a cut-through for massive amounts of traffic. Um, you know, ideally, the way that, and then this is the way that the plan was indicating, was this is supposed to be a more walkable area. So it's not supposed to be where traffic is cutting through, it's, it's, it's supposed to be where people can walk from school to the library. Uh, to potentially new businesses that pop up and that sort of thing, and, and, and walk from these lighter. Uh, trafficked, um, residential areas and so forth. But, you, you know, Maple Street is, it's a two-lane road, you know, it's not, um. It's not meant to be carrying a significant amount, amount of, uh, through traffic as a, as a collector or something like that.
Well, to Donna's, or to Donna's point, if you put a business back there, anywhere on Oak Street. It's going to have to have large trucks for deliveries of whatever the goods are they're selling or dealing with, so. You'd have a heck of a time pulling a semi off of 125. Onto Oak Street. Without ending it up in some, either the, the parking lot there or in somebody's yard, so. My personal opinion is, they should not be business, they should stay residential.
I would agree, I would agree with that.
Well, I agree.
Is that something that needs a motion, Eddie, or just, is this just fair discussion that you can?
Oh, this is all just discussion.
Okay.
Move right along then, Eddie.
Alrighty, these are some of, these are the plan documents that we were talking about here, where, um, you know, the green is the village, the village center area that was designated that we were just looking at there. And more land use plan. Um, and finally, the, uh, the brew pub items here, um. I'm adding in a different definition based on a, a bit of research that I did of surrounding jurisdictions and just the industry in general. Um, so essentially, um, brew pubs shall mean an eating and drinking establishment with a small brewery on the premise, which produces beer, ale, or other malt beverage. And where the majority is consumed on the premises. Uh, the classification allows a brew pub to sell at a retail and/or act as a wholesaler for its own production for off-site consumption. Um. With appropriate state licenses, annual production shall not exceed 5,000 barrels per year, and so that 5,000 barrel per year cutoff. That, that's a standard brew pub cutoff I've seen from, just looking across, uh, various other jurisdictions. Uh, we looked at Anderson, Miami Township, um, you know, just, just broadly, but that, that 5,000, once you go over that, you, you start to become a micro brewery, or brewery in general. And so the permissibility was laid out here as well, the Amelia Neighborhood, uh, as a conditional use. And then in the general business in Amelia Suburban, it would be permitted with conditions. And I further, uh, we, we did not have a definition for bars and taverns. Uh, so my, my recommendation was to add this definition in, which is a bar shall mean an establishment serving alcoholic beverages. In which the principal business is the sale of such beverages at retail for consumption on the premises, where food may be available for consumption on the premises. Um, this breweries, distilleries were also. Um. Were also further, um. Felineated here, it's essentially a facility for distilling or brewery, brewing, um, 10,000 barrels of beverage or more. Um. And that would be permitted as a conditional use in all industrial zones. Let's see here. Oh, and, and one key, key component, so. The, the condit- the, the conditions, and this, this was in your staff report, but it was, I did not carry it over to the presentation. Um, you could conceivably exceed the 5,000 production there, but the conditions basically indicate. That you would have to get a conditional use permit, so if you had a brew pub and it grew to the point where you were, you were, you wanted to produce up to 10,000 barrels. You would have to get, you'd have to go back to the Board of Zoning Appeals to get that, to get an approval. Because obviously that's a pretty more, that's more intensive production. And then a brewery, of course, is just more than 10,000, and that's purely, that would be in, in industrial districts altogether.
Eddie, I have a question on that 5,000.
Yes.
Barrels at a time, who's going to police this to know what, how many barrels they're making?
Well, that would be part of their permit process, I mean, you, you can gener- like. So generally speaking, this is, this is the same thing where. If it becomes a, normally the way that this, the way that this happens is, if it becomes a problem, that's when. You know, we start getting significantly involved, and we have a good feel for what these production levels look like. Uh, so generally speaking, like if you look at, um, somebody, some other facilities nearby. Uh, Little Miami and Big Ash Brewing, for example, they're under 5,000. Those, those sorts of facilities, just, just for a feel for what that, what that's, what that looks like. But you can, and you can gauge as well by the number of, um. Kind of barrels that they have to produce, you know, if they have, you know, 15 barrels that they're clearly producing, or that they have on site. Um, it, and that's a pretty significant investment, that should, that should raise some eyebrows and some sus- some suspicions, like. If you were going to be just a, a small brew pub, you don't need, you know, 15 barrels to produce, if that makes sense.
Is this something that the health department would be looking at, you know, for these permits? I mean, is this something that there would have to be a gauge or something and says they've gone over the five or whatever? I mean, who would be looking, we're not going to go in and know the 5,000, who? Who looks at that?
Anna, Mark, Mark and I would be willing to go and monitor the situation.
Uh, thanks.
I, I was thinking that was something that the, um, brewery license people check, you know. If I've got a license where I'm allowed to produce up to 5,000, and my renewal happens every year, I would have thought some gnome came out. And checked to see what I was doing before my license was renewed, with how the system works.
Yeah, the Ohio Division of Liquor regulates, um, brewing, brewing operations in the state of, state of Ohio. And so they have different, they have different classes of licenses and that sort of thing that they enforce.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so, um. We got through it, and. Um. If, uh, someone has any, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer, um, otherwise, um, we're, we can make a, we can look for a motion. To proceed, um, in any way that, that you guys deem appropriate. But, um.
Well, you're not going to, if I actually had questions, um, when you go, when you follow on from where you were, you have a staff recommendation. Very, um, second thing on page eight is Amelia Comprehensive Plan. And general plan purpose, develop a village center to serve as a community focus, protect the village scale, rub, rub, rub. Um, and I, I made a note, note, the Village of Amelia no longer exists. And I, I. Each time I read this, I go, the Village of Amelia was dissolved, um, and we're using. Part of their original plan, the Amelia Comprehensive Plan. Develop a village center to serve as a community focus, and, and I'm, I'm sorry, I. It sounds like I get upset, maybe that's the way to phrase it, i- i- it just. Doesn't seem correct to me that we're using that language.
Yeah, so we, we had to accept, so. There's, it's, it's a pretty simple equation, I mean, we either have zoning in Amelia. Yeah, so we we had to accept, so there's, it's it's a pretty simple equation, I mean, we either have zoning in Amelia. Or we or we don't, and so we decided to go ahead with zoning in Amelia and. In order, in order to actually adopt a zoning resolution legally in the state of Ohio, we have to have a plan. That substantiates that zoning, so when the Pierce Township zoning land use plan. Was was crafted in two thousand thirteen, Amelia just wasn't part of the township, so. It didn't take into consideration anything about Amelia whatsoever, so when we had to put the zoning resolution in place to. To get a regulatory framework in Amelia after the dissolution, we had to adopt their plan and so. That's kind of what we're stuck with for the, for the, you know, short term here until we can, we can get it all updated, so. Um if we don't want to proceed or if we just want to leave, you know, let sleeping dogs lie sort of thing, that's, you know, we can do that, um. But um. That's kind of. That that's why they, you know, I I understand that it's, you know, there are certain things in there that are not ideal, but it's just, it's. It's all we had to adopt the zoning, otherwise we we were, we're not gonna have any zoning in Amelia.
No, I thought we'd adopted their zoning and added it to our zoning as an extension and we'll leave it. That doesn't mean we adopted their land use plan, quote unquote, that does, that doesn't mean we adopted this piece. Because.
Well, we, yeah, we did.
You you move from there and you go over the page and you've got the land use plan, I would say, why don't we make a revised. Pierce Township land use plan, um and on your last page, you've got the demand for a village center. Destination, location, the focal point in the area has been demonstrated by the immediate land use plan. Which was done in two thousand and reiterated in the recent survey conducted in August twenty twenty, which I've noted, what survey? Who did it, who did the survey, who did it go to, I don't recall ever seeing a survey, um.
I I did the survey, we had, we had over two hundred and twenty responses, and so we we launched it for about three weeks, but. You know.
Where where were the responses, um were the responses all from people of the um. Then defunct village of Amelia, or were the responses from all the people within Pierce Township? Did it go to Pierce Township Circle?
Dan, we all got that, I got a copy of, I mean, I, we, I think everybody within Pierce Township was invited to. Correct me if I'm wrong, Eddie, participate in that survey, and I remember. I don't remember when the meeting was, but I know that Eddie kind of briefly went over that in a meeting.
Yeah, no, you're right, Mr. Stitt, um it was on our website, it's on Facebook, uh we launched on Circle, we put it on the police Facebook page. And uh we had a good response, we had, um it was obviously mostly people who who identified um as living in Amelia. Uh in the prior year, but we did have a se- uh pretty significant number of responses, I think maybe close to maybe fifty responses from. People who say that they're just, they were in Pierce.
Yeah, but if you, if you got two hundred and twenty responses, there's now eighteen thousand people. In Pierce Township, two hundred and twenty responses, even by the way surveys get done in this country, that's, that's. I I'm I'm sorry, that that doesn't count, uh and you know.
It was during a, it was actually during a pandemic and it was all, it was very narrowly focused on Amelia, so. I, you know.
It was also a voluntary uh survey, as I recall.
Yeah.
I mean, it was just out there, I mean, hell, Stan, how many surveys do you take that you get?
I I do, actually, I do quite a lot of surveys, I'm I'm the person who's always for ages and ages, so. Part of the time I worked at um in a market research department, um so I'm I'm not afraid to do surveys, I don't recall ever seeing it. I recall seeing it through Circle, I don't recall seeing it on the website, you know, it's just. So, you know, I'm sorry, but I mean, you know, let let me tell you now, um statistically, two hundred and twenty answers. Out of um a township that has eighteen thousand people is not significant.
Yes, it is, it has an error range of like plus or minus seven percent, this is what I do for a living. And the the biggest problem with that survey is it's a convenient sample, we didn't go out and ask people, we put a link out there. So it's whoever volunteered to do it, so that's the big issue with that, it's probably not representative of. The whole township, it's representative of those who chose to took it, take it, but two hundred and twenty is not. A completely awful sample size.
But but two hundred and twenty out of out of eighteen thousand is, you know, um or what is, let's say five thousand households. That's that's a negligible thing and.
Yeah, but that's what sampling is, Stan.
Um.
I do surveys all the time with two hundred people, so that that's not an issue in my mind.
I think that the really important takeaway on this, though, is that. The sur- the survey wasn't intended, it was the 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 initial intent of the survey was to basically just. Kind of do a little, a mini diagnostic on the on the community, just to see what what are these, what huge issues might there be? That people feel very strongly a- about, so that we can kind of, we can give people an outlet just to communicate back with us. Oddly enough, a lot of what the response that we received. Just reiterated everything, a lot of the things that they had in the twenty, in the year two thousand plan. Which that that wasn't an intended goal, we 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 didn't mean for that to happen, it just, and and now maybe, maybe that was just. Because of the open endedness of some of the questions, it it allowed people to answer in that way, but I think for the most part. That's why, that's why they dissolved in the first place, because a lot of the issues from two thousand were not taken care of. And when you look at the plan and then you look at Amelia, you say, well, why? Why does it, why does the plan from twenty plus years ago look a certain way, and then why does the community with all this development that occurred? In between then and now, look the way it does, and that's because, you know, there maybe there was a disconnect. But we saw that in the survey that connected the two, the two ideas, and it's, okay, well, it makes sense, maybe. Maybe people do still feel this way, so again, as far as being statistically significant and everything, you know, I, you know, I'm not gonna. We don't need to, I don't need to get, you know. We don't need to get too uh involved with all of that, but I mean, I think that we did get a good, good enough feel for what what was going on in the community. What people are thinking about in general, what's on everyone's minds, but um it was interesting that it did tie together with. Some of the desires that had been reiterated decades ago, that still are kind of left unfulfilled.
If I might jump in, I just looked back and that survey. Uh was in the Amelia Community Survey by Laura dated April, the, I'm sorry, August the third, twenty twenty. And there was a link to begin the survey there. That was on our website. And then um. Okay, I thought the results, I thought the results were on here.
Oh yeah, I've got the, yeah, the executive summary, I unfortunately, I'm I'm having to do this from uh from one computer right now, cause I was. I had to leave work, I was really, really sick yesterday, but um so I don't have, I'm I'm kind of a weird setup right now, so I can't really get to it without closing everything.
I can see the 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 final results were, as you said, there were fifteen questions, two hundred and twenty-six responses. Um sixty-eight percent were from the village of Amelia, thirty point three six. Were between the ages of thirty-five and forty-four, fifty-two point oh two percent were former Amelia Village people. Thirty-seven point two were Pierce and ten point seven were Batavia. So, and it were fifty-eight and a half percent female and thirty-nine point seven male.
Is this still accessible, um Jeff?
I'm sorry?
This still accessible, these details, because I've never seen it.
Go to our, go to the township's website and just do a um a search on survey and it comes up.
Okay, I shall go do that because um.
I'm looking at it now because I got two screens working here, so I can see both of them.
I don't, so I'll look at it later, but my knowledge of surveys is a lot depends on the questions you ask, the order in which you ask them. And um I see, I see Susan going mad at me, but I mean, seriously, Susan, it, you know. How you write the survey, the questions you ask, and the order in which you ask them frequently. Alter the way people answer a question.
It does, but this was a pulse, I get a read on where things stood, this wasn't meant to be scientific. It wasn't meant to be completely representative, so you have to take it for what it is.
Okay, yeah, well, okay, in that case, then let's remove the 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 thing that says the demand for village center has been demonstrated. Let's remove that paragraph. Okay, Eddie, Eddie's gone, I've lost Eddie, sorry.
Yeah, he's there, he's there. Well, and I think Eddie, let let me ask this, if we're gonna make a motion on this, we had the discussion about. Um the part of the the old village. You had that hash march going to business and we all talked that we think it should stay.
Right.
Um residential, I think your staff report. Um includes changing that to the business, so I think we need to uh. Somehow change that verbiage, it's gonna be a very uh convoluted uh. Uh motion, I think.
Well, yeah, I'll I'll throw out my notes here, I I I think I took pretty good notes here, um so what I've got, and if somebody just wants to. Piggyback on this, I've got um cemetery, um we'll, we'll do a little more research on the single family residential district. And cemeteries as well as a study property value effects, I'll bring that back to the next meeting. Institutional uses in the um in the Amelia Suburban Business District, um will go to a conditional use permit. From from permitted by right to conditional use permit. Um, let's see, although, I don't know if that's. The, is that, is that accurate, is that what everyone kind of feels like they would like to see? Institutional uses or just leave it the way it is, since we're taking, since it's not gonna be in the overlay?
Well, I thought we decided that it had to be a conditional use permit.
Right, I agree.
Alright, cool, so I'll I'll leave that, um then. Um, do, do, everything else stayed the same, then the the rezoning. To Amelia neighborhood is not to occur.
Right.
So there's partials on Oak, right?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, those stay as residential.
Yep, and then um overlay. Overlay to expand, but not include premier.
Correct.
Okay, the, so the one outstanding issue that we have is that. One of the, one of the other reasons why I was trying to, why I was recommending rezoning those those properties, which I'll get back to here. So these properties here, the yellow and the blue. I I think it's highly va- valuable for those to be in the Amelia downtown overlay district. The problem is, is that the overlay district doesn't allow residential uses on the first floor. So if those are all, if that was all to be, if they wanted to develop that as a single family zoning. You know, there's a, there's a a conflict there, that kind of, that kind of stand, that would.
You're saying the overlay does not allow for first floor residents?
First floor residential, right, because, because it's intended to create like that, you know, Main Street sort of feel, you know what I mean?
Well, so. I go back to my, the point I've been trying to make over and over again is. The downtown business district has the um imprimatur of. Creating this quote unquote village center, I do not want to see that overlay district expanded. Um and and I don't, you know, I I I know I'm hung up, I sound like I'm hung up on it, but. The the demand for a quote village center from a, a thing done in the year two thousand, which is twenty-one years ago. I don't think is necessarily appropriate anymore, and I don't want to see anything that moves. That into an allowable um district. I don't know if everybody, you know, um, I'm not sure Susan's real kid, real kid on me saying that, but um. I I, that's where I am, I I'm sorry, I I want this to just. Sit pat for some time until um. The total dissolution has occurred and control of this area. Totally belongs to um Pierce Township and Pierce Township can have some say in what occurs.
I agree with Stan, I I think, you know, we're trying to pull Amelia into Pierce Township. And if you make that the town center, that's, that's your focus, um that's. That's dividing Pierce again, because that's not center of Pierce. Nor is it the place for the center of Ta- Pierce Township.
Well, I look at this as a stopgap measure to give us more say in what's done on some of these properties. Until a time when everything comes together more.
And I kind of agree with Susan, because as it stands right now.
They could do anything.
They can do too much, so Eddie, I will say that those hashed marks. That we're talking of leaving residential and not changing the business, you know, I'm I'm looking at that part of the map again and. You know, unless that property touches one twenty-five, I don't think it needs in that area to be part of the overlay.
No, I would agree with that.
I'll go along with that. I think it just needs to stay, what is that, is that zoned for residentially right now, Eddie?
It's not one, I think.
Yeah, there are one and R two.
Yeah, the yellow and the blue are, so we could expand the overlay and deduct out the yellow and the blue, that's what.
I could live with that.
I can handle that.
Well, I, why do we want to expand the overlay, period?
To give us more say in what happens in those additional properties.
On that, that, we talked about that, Stan, to control what's going along, happening along one twenty-five there.
You know, Stan, I I, you know, I'm not gonna speak for the group, obviously, but I think is what I'm hearing is. We don't like the way it is, but we need to have somewhat control over what's happening in the present. And once this whole name of Amelia is gone, if that ever happens, but once it's. As you say, a hundred percent Amelia, at that point, I think zoning can then go back. And possibly rezone different parcels along, just because we make a change and throw an overlay over there. Doesn't mean it's cast in stone and then nobody can touch it again, it just means that, in my opinion, or the way I read it. That we have some stopgap and some protection for the time being until we get to that next step. Right now, it's, it's just out there, it's it's virgin property for anybody to do with as they please.
But it's al- it's already um zoned as neighborhood businesses, isn't it, Eddie? The piece, i- if you look at your map with the yellow, the piece between the yellow and one twenty-five, including the little, the. Six or seven little lots that are in red at the front of the old Pomerod property, i- if you, if you look at that piece, that piece is already zoned business, is it not?
Yeah, those areas that don't have any, the between the yellow and one twenty-five, those are Amelia neighborhood. The red is Amelia suburban business right now.
Right, but it's.
Yeah, so the 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 areas without, that are just standard aerial, those are zone business right now.
But they can do something on that property without coming in front of the zoning commission, correct?
Correct.
But if we put it overlay, yeah, it forces them to come in front of us.
Right.
And that's the thing, it it I agree with Susan, it it's not, it's not the ideal situation, it's a stopgap. That's all it is.
I could go along with rezoning the red area and that area, but I don't want the yellow and and the blue to go.
No, no, I agree with you, Donna, I I have no problem with the overlay as Eddie's got it. If we remove the um. Uh the partial construction and remove the the two yellow and the blue hashtags.
Right.
Okay. Okay, what do you want us to do, Eddie, do you want us to make a motion to do that? Or you want to make the adjustments to this and bring it up at the next meeting?
Yeah, so um if you're ready with the um. Basically, everything that I I went through there, I can, I'll bring the cemetery discussion items back. And then modify every, everything as as we discussed, institutional use to see to conditional use permit. Include all text amendments as as discussed without revision. Except for, I will remove the premier property, I will remove the yellow hashed area. except for I will remove the premier property, I will remove the yellow hashed area and the blue areas from the overlay. And I will also not, we will not do the rezoning of any of these lots. So those lots will all stay the same zoning, so we'll scratch that as well. And
And we know that they're residential, Eddie, correct?
The yellow and the blue are residential, yes.
All right.
Hey Eddie, one quick question.
Yep.
On your yellow hashtag, the first property back Oak Street, that's hashtag, just directly north of that, there's that little wedge that does not touch 125. What, is that currently zoned R1 or 2?
Are you talking about the little square?
No, sir, it is. If you come back Oak Street, you've got a piece of property on your map that is not colored, then we hit the hash marks. Directly to the north of that, there is an open spot that's a weird shape. Um, and it touches the other yellow and touches the yellow on the north, it touches Oak Street. There's a, and it's not touching 125.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So that property, it runs right near the train station there? There is like a tiny panhandle.
And it comes back where that building sits?
Yes, and it, and it outlets on the 125 there. That is actually part, that is one of the split zone properties there that's owned by Envisome. It's, it's, a portion of it is zoned Amelia neighborhood business and then another portion of it is zoned R1.
Okay, so because there's that little tiny sliver that reaches out to 125, that would enable it to be part of the overlay?
Right.
Yeah, the way, the way that I would run the overlay though, is I would just keep it off of, I guess we would just have to keep it off of the residential zone portions of those properties.
Because right now you've got that little strip as part of the overlay.
Yes. Yeah, but, um, I would just, I would, I would remove the, the actual residential zone portions of those properties from it.
I would prefer that.
And so if you develop the portion of the property that, that is commercially zoned, you could do X, Y, and Z. But obviously the residential could develop residentially without, without being the overlay. So, that's, so.
Eddie, I have a question.
Yeah.
That development that, um, when you get down Oak and then you turn to the left, um, it's that newer development back there, back the street where the post office is, you know what I'm talking about, those new houses?
Yeah, client sta- client station, right?
That's it. How are those, are you, are you doing a lot of permits on those or is that a pretty slow development?
Oh, they're, um, they're, they're almost built out completely. They're, they're almost done. I think, um, about a month and a half ago, they might've had, I think, I think they said maybe five lots that weren't under contract. And that was about a month and a half ago, we've.
And that's, that's a development where they alternate every other plan. They only have like two plans and they alternate them going down the street. Correct? I see your smile. That's, that's really classy development.
Hey, you know, that, that was not us.
I know, I know.
Well, Eddie, I'm willing to make a motion, but I sure as hell don't know what I'm going to say.
Yeah, that, that's why, I mean, maybe we just hold this in advance and relook at it next month with these alterations.
Okay.
Or does that?
I think that's fair, and I think if we had a separate sheet of paper and not asking you to write the motion, Eddie, but maybe put the verbiage, some of the verbiage, the way you think it should be, so we get it right.
Yeah, and, and thi- this, this meeting was just to be a, a, a work, this is our first like work set, you know, work session on this whole thing, so.
I think you know where our heads are.
Yeah, yeah, I feel pretty good about it, all pretty consistent and, uh,
Except for one person.
Okay.
I didn't mention your name, you didn't have to say, okay.
We, we all know what Mr. Shadwell's thinking.
Which direction you turned your head, I'm, I'm to the right of you in my picture.
All right, that sounds good. I'll, I'll bring all this, I'll bring all this back next, uh, next month here.
Sounds, sounds good. Eddie, you, you don't look like you're feeling very well right now.
I, um, it took me about two and a half hours to get home yesterday. I was so sick. It was, uh, it was a bad situation. But I think I'm, I'm on the road to recovery, it's like a 24 hour bug, I think.
Oh, we know what 24 hour bugs are. You're sick.
Yeah.
Okay, um, shall we move on? The, the, the next note was there any additional business? I'll, I'll be quite not say anything.
That'd be a first.
Well, may, maybe I should say something. Um, I have to thank Eddie for going and talking to the, um, properties that I'd complained about just along Nine Mile. The first one past the end of Nordike, um, he's actually removed three pieces of trashy vehicles from, um, beside the house. And so you only see the ratty house now, you don't see the trashy vehicle. Ran up the hill. I'm not sure he's done anything because it still looks like that whole pile of vehicles up there. The first guy on, as you turned into Nordike, he's removed the daggy trailer from beside the house and sort of cleaned up a little bit around the house. And a little bit further up the road that I'm not allowed to refer to as anything, uh, the one with the small bridge and all the cars out the front, very hard to see if they've actually done anything. But anyway, I wanted to thank you, Eddie, for, um, coming and talking to him because it looks like it's actually achieved something.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, we'll, we'll continue to work with them too. And I know that the house with the bridge, they are doing some significant renovations on, on the facade of one of those houses on the, like on the front, on the front of it. And they, I don't know if you caught it, but they had a propane tank, I guess, that was, they pulled it out to the road and they spray painted free on it. And I, I'm, I'm assuming somebody took it. But, um, they were also demoing, uh, one of the, the cinder block walls as well. And, and I saw they had wheelbarrows and they were kind of carting it out, but they're, they're, um, they're very nice people, they're very reasonable and they were working with us. But, um, I think it might take, it's going to take a little bit of time. I mean, that, that's a pretty significant undertaking that they're, they're going throughout there.
Okay. Anybody?
I have a question, Eddie. I, it's off our meeting, but have we had any applicants for the inspector position?
Uh, so right now, Loretta and I are just finishing up the job description. And we're going to present that. We, we have it drafted up and we're just going to have to finalize it and we'll launch it. But I can't imagine somebody wouldn't want to work for Pierce Township. So I feel like once we'll put that out, we'll just have like, you know, dozens of people coming in, hopefully.
You're going to have a line out the door.
I, yeah, I hope so. I mean, it's a
Is that a full-time position, Eddie?
It hasn't been decided yet. I'm, I'm thinking it, it'll probably end up being a, a, a part-time sort of, sort of circumstance.
Wasn't Hub like three days a week, Donna?
Uh, Tub worked, I think he was 30 hours.
Or Tub, I'm sorry, 30, yeah.
He was a good guy.
Yeah, it's a shame.
Okay, anybody else with any additional business?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, thank you very much, folks. Um, Catherine, it was a pleasure meeting you. You, you, you now know what you've let yourself in for.
Not too bad.
Okay.
We'll see you folks next month.
Have a good night, guys.
Bye.
Bye.
Thanks, Eddie. All right.